It was just because a couple of minutes we started. Huh? If you please rise to honor our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikicich?
Here.
Seven present.
Under minutes, we have approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, June 5th, 2013. Motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Ross Sikicich, seconded by Mr. Leary, all those in favor, signed by saying aye, opposed, so voted, we have permission to enter. Permission to enter for June 19th, 2013. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the Lighthouse School Incorporated and the amount of $2,422, to amend the existing contract to provide for additional out-of-district tuition costs for 11 students and one additional student enrolled in receiving services outlined in their special education IEP, funding will be provided by the school department FY-13 budget Special Education Tuition Account. To C. Lynn Chambers and the amount of $6,000, to provide staff training which will directly benefit teachers by improving their capacity to utilize specific assistive technology instruments for special education students. Funding will be provided by the school department FY-14 budget Special Education 240 grant. To Dorothy C. Eisenhower M. E. D. C. C. S. L. P. and the amount of $5,000, to provide consultation and training to special education teachers working with students with cochlear implants to observe these students as needed to make recommendations related to their individual education plan. Funding provided by the school department FY-14 budget Special Education 240 grant. To Middlesex Community College in the amount of $35,000, to provide Lowell High School with violence prevention peer mediation program SCORE, under the auspices of Middlesex Community College Law Center. Funding provided by the school department FY-14 budget Special Programs. To Middlesex Community College in the amount of $842,063, to continue the Bridge Program at the David J. McHugh Alternative Middle School housed at the Riverside School on Woburn Street. The program will serve 50 students in grades 7 and 8, including the integration of special education students with non-behavioral IEPs. Funding provided by the school department FY-14 budget Contracted Services. To Middlesex Community College in the amount of $52,500, to pay for tuition and acuplacer testing for qualified students from Lowell High School who earn both high school and college credits by taking courses at Middlesex Community College in the Dual Enrollment Program. Funding provided by the school department FY-14 budget and the Race to the Top Grant.
Thank you. Any discussion? Do you stand a motion? Motion to approve by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikicich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, we have the ratification of memorandum of agreement for the SEIU clerks. Moved to approve by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikicich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have the ratification of memorandum of agreement for the SEIU library aides. Moved to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikicich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have the salary adjustments for non-affiliated staff. Moved to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikicich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Under memorials, we have Phyllis K. Banks, mother of the Butler School teacher, Michael Banks, and Maury School paraprofessional Patricia Morris. Arthur Hurkey Santos, father of Technology Integration Specialist Arthur J. Santos, Jr., Lowell High School nurse Colleen Asselin, school floating nurse Christine Durkin, and father-in-law of Lowell High School custodian Alan Seer. Frank Byers, brother-in-law of Pine Arts School teacher Alexander Graham, and Louis A. Lo Cicero, uncle of District Support Specialist Margot Ferick. Will you please rise in a moment of silence in darkened chambers? Next, we have motions. First motion by Kristen Ross Sikicich, request the superintendent ensure the upcoming bid process for food services in Lowell Public Schools that the contractor makes more than sufficient effort to provide our schoolchildren with an adequate supply and quality of food that is served in our school capitaries throughout the district. Further requesting that food surveys be administered to our students and families twice annually, mid-year, and end of year to ensure fuller feedback on this service that is provided to our children. Seconded by Ms. Scott, Ms. Ross Sikicich.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason -- this motion is very much self-explanatory, but the reason why I brought this forward just this week was I had actually received reports from teachers in the district that children were actually returning to their classrooms after lunch not having been fed because there wasn't enough food left for our students. You know, certainly that's a significant service that we provide, and certainly our children can't be doing a heck of a lot of learning if their stomachs are empty. You know, and to the other aspect in terms of quality, I mean, I hear from my own children, I hear from other children in the district, I hear from other parents, you know, concerns that are raised about the quality of the food that we offer our children, and since we're going into a new bidding contract, a new contract potentially with another vendor, we just want to ensure that we're incorporating all of these aspects into our contracting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sign by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next motion by Kim Scott, request the administration work together with City Solid Waste and Recycling Coordinator to prepare a plan that includes expanding lunchroom recycling and composting options for students and staff. Seconded by Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I brought this motion forward after speaking with the City Solid Waste and Recycling Coordinator. The city is moving to a new contract in January, and it was brought to my attention that the schools will also be receiving single-stream dumpsters at that time, come January. So, the solid waste committee a few years back came forward with a plan to the superintendent of schools, and I'm not sure if that was you, Ms. Franco, or the prior superintendent, and that plan included milk box recycling at the time. An agreement was reached to basically start off with step one, which was to form a green team at each school. I think now with this new dumpster implementation and the janitors having the tools that they need to be able to recycle, I think it's time for us to move on to step two and to really take a good look at recycling in the schools and the cost savings that could be returned to the school system from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, sign by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next motion by Kristen Ross Sikicich, request the superintendent seek out professional development opportunities for paraprofessionals working with children with neuro-sensory disabilities. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Ms. Ross Sikicich.
Thank you, Mayor. This motion actually came about as a result of a conversation with a mom who has a young boy in the district at one of our middle schools, and he has some significant disabilities and requires the assistance of a paraprofessional on a daily basis. She does a lot of work and a lot of advocacy, and you know, she was not -- she had not complained at all about the services that were rendered. She really put this out there as a means to improve the services that we require -- that we provide for all of our children. And in particular, this -- there was a training, it's called an intervenue training, and it's offered by the Perkins School for the Blind, and it's apparently offered at no charge to school districts. And it's not limited to this, there are many other free trainings that are provided through many of the vendors that we contract with throughout the school year. So, these trainings would encompass a wide range of neurological disorders. Training for paraprofessionals would certainly give us significantly more capacity and allow us to keep more of our children with challenging issues in the district. It would also reduce our out-of-district placements and would certainly save us money. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ross Sikicich. Your timing is excellent. Mrs. Abrams and I and the Paraprofessional Union have been meeting because, as you may recall, that we did look into professional training specifically for our paras, and so we are looking into different issues, and training for special needs is one of the kind of district-wide training we're gonna -- we're going to look at. Also, technology, use of technology, student needs, different needs, and perhaps confidentiality as three pieces, and so this is helpful with the resource from Perkins, so thank you.
I'd just like to add one more component. There is the capacity to actually participate in a Train the Trainer program where you would send one or two staff to these facilities to be trained in these particular modalities, and they would return to the district and provide training to their peers as another option. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, sign by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have subcommittee reports. Student Support Services reporting approval of the minutes of meeting of Thursday, June 13th, 2013. Ms. Ross Sikicich.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on June 13th. Those in attendance, myself, Mr. Conway, Mr. Gignac, also present was Ms. Martin. Superintendent Jean Franco, Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy, City Solicitor Christine O'Connor, Lowell High Headmaster Brian Martin, and Andrea Alaski from Lowell Community Health Center were also present. The Student Support Services Subcommittee met for just -- with just one agenda item, and that was the regarding the Lowell Community Health Center services at Lowell High School. In particular, its relevance to the health center at the high school being allowed to distribute condoms to our high school students. The Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy presented an overview of the discussions that had taken place relative to teen pregnancy. At the May 13th Student Support Services Subcommittee meeting, the Greater Lowell Health Alliance presented the findings of the Teen Pregnancy Task Force. A motion to give permission for the Lowell Community Health Center's school-based clinic at Lowell High School to have condoms available was referred to this Subcommittee for further discussion and consideration. Andrea Alaski from the Lowell Community Health Center outlined the proposed guidelines for condom availability at the LHS Health Center. Discussion of the proposed guidelines in the Department of Public Health advisories and regulations followed. Committee members sought an opinion from City Solicitor Christine O'Connor regarding the legality of condom availability at the school-based health center. After a lengthy discussion, the following motion was brought forth. It was a motion by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Conway, to recommend to the full committee the adoption of the Lowell Community Health Center Guidelines for condom distribution at the Lowell High School Health Center pending the city solicitor's opinion on its legality.
Motion by Ms. Ross Sikicich, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Any discussion? Mr. Conway?
The -- I talked to the city solicitor today, and she said that she was still reviewing the process and the procedure, and also the idea of the age of under consent, that parents could perhaps opt out of the program if their child is under the age of consent. And she certainly gave me the impression that she wanted to make sure it was done correctly. She wanted to make sure that there were some cities and towns that have the process, that have a form where a parent can opt out if their child is under the age of consent, and she wanted to take a look at that and find out the pros and cons and find out the legalities of it. And as she said to me, in three days, it's very difficult to come up with that. So, I mean, my suggestion on this would be to, since the students are out of school anyway at this point, and I think we talked with the staff, the medical staff, and they mentioned that it would -- they could put the whole process and procedure together relatively quickly, so I think it might be prudent on our part to delay this until the next school committee meeting so that we can have the city solicitor here, and if there are any questions or any objections or any, excuse me, potential problems, that we could clear them up at that particular meeting.
Any further discussion? Is that in the form of a motion?
It's a form of a motion.
Motion to delay until next meeting?
Until the next school committee meeting, we have the city solicitor here, so that she said that she could have a full report and a better understanding about the process and that, you know, again, she could answer any of our questions at that point.
Substitute motion by Mr. Conway. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Leary. On the motion, Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, my second to that original motion, I thought the intent of the motion was to wait for the solicitor's opinion in the first place. I don't know if that was -- am I correct, Chair? Yeah. So, whenever that actually happens, I think then we'll take an action, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Again, as long as we -- if -- I will retract that motion, substitute motion, as long as we have the legal guidance to get it correct and so that we can put it into place, that's fine with me.
Yeah. Motion withdrawn then, with consent of Mr. Gignac. We return to the original motion. Any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Well, hold on, just to quick clarify a couple of things. One, I guess, Mr. Conway just asked a question, so I guess the question is, do we have the legal opinion? I don't -- we don't have that legal opinion in front of us. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Leary. I also spoke with the city solicitor Christine O'Connor late this afternoon, and she did tell the same concern. She said that she was unable to go over it, but she did not -- she did know that she would be able to do that, so she was comfortable with moving to approve and then if anything changes. So, she said it would be okay to go forward, she would be getting information to us, and if then there are any problems, but she said it was fine. She thought that constitutionality-wise, that she was going to find anything in the way of the policy, but she wanted more time to review it. So, she said you could move to approve, and then still, of course, pending her final decision, so she said you could go forward.
So, just a quick question on this. So, she's said it's legal to do this, then, it's not a problem, but yet there's -- does she need more time to review? I'm a little confused, I apologize. When Mr. Con -- I mean, I didn't have a conversation with the city solicitor today. I thought what she was reviewing is a couple of things. One, to make sure it was legal, it could be done. Two, there was an opt-out provision built in place for parents, especially for, you know, students that are, you know, 16 or under, that they would have that in place, that would be developed. I don't know if you need a legal complete review of that if we're just taking the policies from like cities like Cambridge, but does she have something in writing at this point saying she has made a final review?
She did not have the time to have that piece in writing, but she said she was looking at the constitutionality of the opt-out. She did not find anything that was against the right for the opt-out policy. So, she had said that she thought you could move forward, and she would have a review within the next few days for the next meeting.
Okay, just one last statement. I mean, I was gonna vote yes for it tonight, but I don't see the problem of waiting another meeting or two. First, if we do wait, I want to do it in August because I unfortunately, because I've switched our meeting dates, I booked a business trip that same day, so I'm gonna miss the next meeting. I want to be here to make that vote, because I don't want to escape the vote one way or the other. But I don't think it's a bad idea to get all the information in front of us before we actually take that step. I mean, I think we need to have a complete -- what I thought we were gonna do is have a complete policy in place, which I would, in my opinion, would have an opt-out for certain parents that want to opt out. Again, I'm in favor of the policy in general. I mean, if it was a general, this policy was in place, it was legal, I'd be voting yes. But I do have a problem, why aren't we waiting until we get that complete opinion? That's all. I mean, I think that's kind of the wisest thing to do, that the students are not at the high school at this point. I think our meeting is the third Wednesday in August, we have plenty of time to, you know, go over any questions that staff might have. I think it's something, based on the statistics alone, that we need to be doing it, I don't have an argument there, but I think parents have a right to opt out, and we need to make sure we're doing that in a way that's legal and, quite frankly, meaningful. Thank you.
Again, just to clarify what the actual motion was from out of the Subcommittee, as I read it, it's to accept the recommendations of the Subcommittee for the adoption of the Lowell Community Health Center Guidelines for condom distribution at the Lowell High School Health Center pending the city solicitor's opinion on its legality.
A clarification for the ignorant here. So, basically, if I vote yes tonight and the city solicitor comes back saying there's issues, then what happens? I guess basically then we will take another vote at that point in time. Is that correct? I mean, that's -- I mean, just for being simple.
Mr. Conway, then Mr. Gignac.
I mean, where it says there pending the review of the city solicitor, so the city solicitor hasn't reviewed it yet at this point. I know when I talked to her, she had all intentions of trying to get that through the last, you know, the three minutes, excuse me, the three days or four days, but she said she obviously didn't have that opportunity because it got rather complicated. So, I mean, I agree. I don't know why we can't just delay it and so that we have all the information right in front of us.
I think that's essentially what the motion calls for. Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, I think the motion is to accept the policy upon the city solicitor's approval, so it will not be implemented until the city solicitor either accepts it or denies it. Therefore, tonight, our motion is simply to wait, really. So, just to clarify, I think that was the motion that was made out of the Subcommittee that I seconded, so unless I'm completely wrong, I don't think we have anything to worry about tonight.
Ms. Ross Sikicich.
Yes, Mr. Gignac, you did interpret that correctly.
Is there any further discussion on the motion as read? Ms. Martin?
Hating to jump into this, but I -- just to be clear, if we are gonna do a vote on this, what's been proposed, what's been proposed doesn't have a opt-out component. So, we'd be approving something without an opt-out component, and then we'd need to then have a discussion, but that would have to be an additional thing. So, approving what it is today, saying that we would only be changing in the -- should the city solicitor come back with a concern, ostensibly the city solicitor will only be reviewing what actually exists. She would not be reviewing an opt-out. Just thought I'd jump in there.
Mr. Conway?
So, in other words, there's no provision in there at this point for an opt-out. Is that correct?
We could refer it back to the Student Support Services Subcommittee to meet during the month of July and take into account the city solicitor's review and then move forward with a comprehensive.
We could.
I'll second that.
Is that a motion? Before we do, let's hear for the Assistant Superintendent who won't be here at that point, Ms. Anne Murphy.
Thank you. It is my understanding, after having several conversations with the city solicitor, after the meeting, before the meeting, after our last school committee meeting and the Subcommittee meeting last Thursday, that she is looking at the legality of a community-based health center in a public school distributing condoms. And the guidelines that the committee had asked for at the last meeting, the Lowell Community Health Center has put forward. My understanding is that Solicitor O'Connor will be providing you information as to the legality of going forward with the condom distribution. As to whether this committee decides for an opt-out piece, that's really going to be up to the committee. So, what you will -- my understanding is what you will get back from the solicitor is, it is not legal to do it, and it's a dead issue. It is legal to do it, and if it is legal, then the committee would then need to decide whether to have the discussion about having an opt-out or not having an opt-out. I hope that helped to clarify.
Mr. Leary, and then Mr. Conway.
Just thank you, Madam Assistant Superintendent. So, I think Ms. Martin's motion's appropriate. You get the legal opinion, which I believe would say it's okay. We discuss the opt-out during July, and we vote on this in August. Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. As a substitute motion, another substitute motion. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Conway?
I'm all set.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yeah.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikicich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, we have the -- excuse me, Ms. Ross Sikicich? Is that the end of the report? Oh, thank you.
I'd like to submit that as a report of progress.
Report of something. So moved by Ms. Ross Sikicich, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor, sign by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have the curriculum reporting approval of the minutes of the meeting of Thursday, June 13th, 2013. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on the 13th. Present from the Subcommittee were myself and Mr. Leary. Present from Central Office were the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Abrams, our School Improvement and Accountability Coordinator, James Neary, Dr. Palarche, our Coordinator of English Language Learner Programs, and Martha Cohn, Coordinator of our Pre-K-12 Science Social Studies. We also had a number of other representatives that I'll discuss as we go through the different items. We did have a great deal to discuss, so going through these eight different items, we'll try to be as concise as we can. First topic was, we talked about the CTAC update, which is the review that all of our Level III schools are going through right now. It is focused on those schools who are trying to address lagging student performance. It is focused on those schools who are trying to address lagging student performance. We did have representatives, Lee Rutledge and Donald Gratz, who are both there to talk about the process. They've been working with these schools. They do include the Bartlett-McAvenue, Riley, Shaughnessy, Stocklosa, and Sullivan. We have been monitoring this, obviously, over the course of the year and I think we are starting to see some results. We were confirmed that by the end of the school year, so today, every one of these schools will have completed their review process so that they really would have their, have set their priorities. You know, we have representatives, administrators, as well as teachers, working very closely together with CTAC to develop what the priorities will be as they start in September. It's certainly been a very intensive process as they review what they're really gonna be focusing on in terms of student achievement for the upcoming year. And I think we're all very hopeful that we'll see real impact and real change as a result of this hard work. Our second topic was, we did entertain a request for a research study. This was presented to us by Lynn Sacks and she is going to be, we offered, the subcommittee offered permission to her over the course of our summer programming. She's doing research particularly around English language learners and trying to determine if summer school programming does have significant impact on the summer loss, which we certainly anecdotally and in concrete terms too, have been able to look at over the course of many years, that that period between June and when students come back in September, you can see students learning, losing a whole grade level, sometimes more, over the course of a summer. So her research is gonna be focused on how that in particular impacts English language learners and she will be sharing her results from focus on the gateway cities here in Massachusetts. Our next report was from the district support team and this was really a report for the subcommittee to review of accomplishments of this team over the course of the last school year. The district support team really is made up of a number of different district-wide specialists and other administrators who really go in, I had used the phrase that they go in as kind of an educational SWAT team, to all of our schools. This comes from the model that was developed as part of our Level IV Merkland School turnaround and it really does mirror that activity where you bring very high-level administrators to a school. The school gets the benefit of their expertise in making dramatic changes to their curriculum and to their teaching protocols. So this is something that's been going on across our district. Again, I think the, it's interesting and I guess heartening that we've gone from using that, the Merkland Experience, which had been initially targeted as our lowest-performing school in the district. And from that, we've not only seen the Merkland have a dramatic turnaround because of the, really, this process, we're now able to take that approach and use it across our district so that we're able to see the impact of that on a much grander scale. It really is the exact purpose of taking this kind of approach for our schools that are struggling in a lot of different areas. Our next topic was Civics Day update. This was a result of a motion by my colleague Ms. Scott as an effort to bring our students into the downtown, into our civic spaces, introducing them to their own city in a lot of cases. The, Ms. Cohn had presented to us what I think looks like a remarkable day for our students and I can't wait. So that will be happening as kind of a pilot, starting in September. It looks like a phenomenal opportunity for our students to visit City Hall, to visit the library, take a trolley ride. And I think it's gonna be absolutely spectacular to have gangs of young children wandering the streets of downtown, visiting all these key locations. And I'm hoping that the downtown will be appropriately welcoming. I can say as a resident during the day at least of my workplace, we'll be looking forward to welcoming the kids as they get this opportunity to meet their city. Our next topic was the, we've seen the first pilot video from our effort. These were, the Maury School was our test case and it really is extraordinarily well-done. I'm excited for everyone to get an opportunity to view it. So someone should hit play.
Welcome to the Maury School, home of the CW Maury School Tigers. I am Ms. Desmond and I'm the principal of the Maury School.
And I am the Assistant Principal, Mr. DeRozes.
The Maury School serves grades pre-K through four with four classrooms at each grade level. The Maury School has been designated as a Level One school by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for meeting our annual yearly progress goals based on our MCAS test results. Level One is the highest designation that a school can receive. As a result, we have been named a commendation school two years in a row by the Massachusetts Commissioner of Education. We have an outstanding, caring, child-centered faculty that has high expectations for all students. We focus on a balanced literacy approach to teaching literacy and meeting grade-level expectations in all academic areas. Parents have opportunities to share in our school's success through our parent-teacher organization and our school site council. We also offer family nights several evenings throughout the year.
Besides our parents and faculty assisting us in achieving our school goals is the 21st Century After-School and Summer Programs. Our After-School program meets two days per week for grades one and two and two days per week for grades three and four. Our Summer School program meets Monday through Friday for four hours per day for four weeks during the summer.
This Maury School building was opened in April of 2009. Our building offers the latest technology and our allied arts rooms are also very well-equipped. Several classrooms contain extensive leveled reading libraries, iMac computers, digital projectors, document cameras, and printers. Every grade level has access to Smartboard technology. Additional technology is included in our computer lab where students meet once per week and utilize our various academic computer programs to include Lexia and FastMath. These programs provide our students with additional practice in both reading and mathematics. The lab houses 26 iMac computers featuring 21-inch widescreen monitors.
Our gymnasium features a full-length basketball court or two shorter courts. We have a rock climbing wall as well as tricycles, slide gliders, soccer, floor hockey, and other activities and games. Our students really enjoy learning about rules and regulations and participating in these activities.
In art class, our students learn about different art forms and the history of famous artists. Students produce many different forms of artwork. Our art teacher works with local art galleries to display student artwork at different times throughout the school year.
The music room offers state-of-the-art technology including computers, digital projector, document camera, and color printer. Our students have the opportunity to learn about various forms of music and have access to several types of instruments.
Students have the opportunity to participate in book exchange at the Maury School Library once a week. Our school library has an extensive book collection with both fiction and nonfiction titles. We strive to increase our collection annually to meet the needs and requests of our teachers and our students.
Our students also attend a content literacy course once per week. This course focuses on the integration of science and social studies topics with reading and writing. This class is very hands-on and project-based. Students are expected to use technology to improve their research skills. The classroom has several IMACs and a Smartboard.
We hope this video has given you a glimpse of the many-faceted approaches to learning that we at the Maury School offer our students. Our goal is to provide a top-quality educational experience and support students to reach the district's goal of being career and college-ready. Go Maury Tigers!
Ms. Martin, do you want to tell somebody to stop this?
Apparently that's what it takes. But I would echo those same sentiments. I think, you know, having seen this for the first time at the meeting, I was absolutely blown away. I think it is a phenomenal accomplishment that we'll be able to, you know, parents from our website will be able to access a video like this about every one of our schools, have an opportunity to, you know, in a cyber sense, meet their, the administrators. So I think it's been very well-done. I am very appreciative to the administration and to the staff who are involved in this. Mr. Pennard and his team, I think, just did a great job and I think it will really be a fabulous resource for us. So that was a real highlight of our subcommittee meeting. So thank you for that. Next topic was our Idea Camp, which will be going on this summer. This is a science/technology camp. We've talked about it, I know, several times. We have 140 students registered who will be participating this summer. We did have some conversations moving forward so that as we look at the next year's programming, we will be making, I think, some adjustments to ensure that we have a broader outreach here for Lowell students, you know, again, in a broader sense, so I'm looking forward to that. And I think one of the key things to remember as we go through this process is that we'll have our own Lowell teachers who will be participating in this program with the whole purpose being that they can then take this project-based learning opportunity and translate it during the regular school year so that all of our students will have a better, stronger, faster exposure to science in our classrooms across the district. So it's really, it's certainly an opportunity for the students who'll have a chance to attend this summer. But I think even more importantly, we'll be able to have this expertise now and get an exponential effect from it as these teachers go back into their traditional classroom. Next topic were the summer math calendars and summer reading lists. They are extensive. They are humbling and challenging and I wish the best of luck to all of our students who will be adhering to them this summer. I think that it's certainly ambitious and I think it is, I'm hoping that our students have a great time discovering all these, all these new reading opportunities and the math calendars. Good luck. Summer reading is one thing. Summer math can be a whole different thing. So moving forward with those, I appreciate the administration sharing those with us. Finally was a list, certainly too, just too extensive to mention. We received from the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, a list of her department's accomplishments over the course of this last school year. It is impressive. It is extremely lengthy and it is extremely appreciated. I think the work that she and her team have done across the district is just really, it's been a, it's been a busy, busy year for Ms. Abrams and her team and I think the work they've done has quite literally changed the lives of students in our, in our district. And I know we're all very appreciative of the work that they do, moving us more and more and closer and closer to excellence for all of our students. So again, it was an extremely long list. I can only offer our thanks to the Assistant Superintendent and her team and let her know that the work is not over and the beat goes on. I would recommend that as a report of progress. I will say, I did my best to be succinct, so if I did miss anything, I would certainly defer to my colleagues and the administration to highlight anything that I may have missed.
We did have a motion out of the subcommittee to accept the proposal with the benefit of allowing the Lowell district be identified in this research and submit to the full committee for approval. And so I'd entertain that motion by Ms. Martin.
I would make that motion.
Seconded by Ms. Ross Sikwicz. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Entertained the motion to accept the report as a report of progress, so moved by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next we have the Personnel Subcommittee, report of the meeting on Monday, June 17th, 2013. Ms. Martin.
Just when you thought it was safe. So we met this past Monday. Present from the Personnel Subcommittee were myself, Mr. Conway, and Ms. Scott. We also had from the Full School Committee, Mr. Gignac and Mr. Leary. And from the School Department, we had Superintendent Franco and Deputy Superintendent Lang. We did have a number of different topics that we discussed. First was a discussion of the Personnel Selection Committees as they've been functioning in our district. At our previous Personnel Subcommittee, we had discussed making a move from bringing our selection committees from eight down to six. We had also, at that Subcommittee meeting, recommended giving the superintendent the option when it was challenging or difficult to fully populate those committees, to allow her to move forward in those circumstances. And finally, we had specifically cited the positions of principal and director of special ed as ones that would have, that would have the full Personnel Selection Committee kind of protocol used. We had a long conversation about all these issues and I think, and I will do my best to bring this down, but if we need additional information, please feel free to jump in. My feeling, my understanding, based on the meeting and based on the minutes, is that we've recognized that at this point in the year, over the course of the summer, there are no principal or administrative positions that fall into this category right now. So the need to make a change immediately does not exist. I think the thing that really bubbled to the surface was that we need to look at these policies in a more comprehensive way so that the committee, the Personnel Subcommittee, can look at one picture, one protocol, that we would have in place so that if the, whatever principalship is up, is trying to be filled, there's a specific process that we go through to fill that. I think that these, and, you know, and then the next layer of that is, as principals are filling positions, what's the protocol they use? There is a great deal of difference across the district. Some of it, I think, just comes from, you know, the people doing things as they always have. But I think that this is the opportunity, it has risen to the top as an issue, and what we need to do is put in place something that is prescriptive, that is very clear in the way that we do this and that we can name, I mean, there, as I had said at the meeting, there's really only gonna be about six different categories of jobs that we're talking about. And if we can put in place for each one of those categories exactly how we do it, we can build into it what triggers what. If we only have, say, four applicants for a position, there's no need to have a selection committee to whittle it down to three. You know, we can put in place the, enough of the kind of changes that can happen so that everyone can know what to expect and that certain things will trigger the next step. But I think we can do that in a way that is helpful and that will bring us some consistency across the district. So we discussed with the administration that for, we would, the Personnel Subcommittee would meet in July and they would, the administration would present us with their best practices, approach, what they'd like to see in place for this. It will give the Personnel Subcommittee and certainly the full committee, an opportunity to look at this in a broader sense and I hope be able to put something in place that does, is comprehensive enough that it will resolve the issues of inconsistency across the district. That's my understanding of it. I would, if anyone would like to add anything.
Any discussion at this point? Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just very briefly, and again, it was, I want to thank Ms. Martin for running that meeting because it was, it got a little complicated and there was a lot of information that was put on the table. I think the, one of the issues that I wanted to see resolved was the fact that there were too many people throughout the district that I have received reports from that say that the process was inconsistent and the hiring and the promotion process, there were differences. And I think the only point, and I think Ms. Martin did an excellent job presenting it tonight, but I just wanted to just very briefly say that the key word is consistency and that I think that no matter what we do, if we have the selection committee, it needs to be consistent. The message needs to be also consistent. And when principals are hiring their staff, again, throughout the entire system, it has to be, everyone has to be on the same page. Because if you have one principal who's doing something a little bit different than another principal, right away, red flags go up and say, why is that person doing that when somebody else is doing something different? And I think that we need to show the public, we need to show our staff and certainly our parents that we're trying to get the best to show our staff, and certainly our parents, that we're trying to get the best person for the job, and we're going to try to be as consistent as possible. And as Ms. Martin said, the, when there are only four individuals looking for a job, you don't, you certainly don't have to have a selection committee or process that automatically goes to the Superintendent and her staff. I think that's, that's something that's always been done. I think it certainly makes sense not to have a selection committee at that point. But again, I think the whole idea of the consistency, and I, and I know that I'm, I've said this a number of times, but I've heard people say, there are so many stories out there. And are all these stories correct? Not necessarily. But if there are just a few that are correct, then there's too many. And I think we just have to clear that up. And I think that we, I think that we made that perfectly clear at the, at the meeting, and I, and I think the staff, the Central Administration Superintendent certainly understands that. And I'm waiting, looking forward to see that, that whole process, the way it unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. So it would be the motion by Ms. Scott, seconded by Mr. Conway, to request the administration provide at our next regular meeting of the School Committee in July 2013, a recommendation outlining the classification category of each administrative position in the district, along with composition of either a formal or informal selection committee that will be used in the screening and review process of candidates for job openings. Thank you, Mr. Lang, for writing that. What I would say is that I think we, this should go to the Personnel Subcommittee before it comes to the full committee, so we would have time during the month of July to review it, but that this would stand, that we want the administration to present at the July meeting, the, their best, best practice approach to putting in this, this new protocol. So I'd make that in the form of a very convoluted motion.
So the motion, then, there was actually amendment to the motion to provide that at the
Personnel Subcommittee.
Personnel Subcommittee rather than regular meeting in the School Committee, a recommendation outlining all of what you've just said.
Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. The second topic that we discussed was confidentiality during the hiring process and a report that we received from the City Solicitor's Office. Information that I think most of us have probably seen before. I think the key for it is, is that we do want to promote an environment where confidentiality is respected. It is respected for individuals, both internal and external, as they may, are, as they are applying for other jobs within the district, again, both inside and outside candidates, that it is incumbent upon the administration, incumbent upon anyone who's involved in the hiring process, that confidentiality and absolute confidentiality is expected of that, of any individual who's involved in that process. So we was basically an update for all of us about what the requirements are around confidentiality and how important that will be, has been in our district and needs to continue to be in our district. And that was, I would, I would submit that and this full report as a report of progress.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikewich. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have reports of the Superintendent. Educator Evaluation Progress Report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As this committee knows, we, in our last negotiations, part of the very new critical piece was the new educator evaluation tool. And part of that legislation had a mandatory training piece. And so I thought I would give you an update of what has happened since the negotiations came through and since everything became the way of, the way we were going to do business. So this report just goes over the fact that in our effort to make this reflective and true process, we started the whole unwrapping of the new evaluation process by a co-presentation by the administration and the Union Vice, Executive Vice President Kate McLaughlin, where they just talked about the negotiated language. And so we've been using time at leadership to talk to our principals. I've been meeting, along with other administrators and from the Joint Commission of Educator Evaluation, which was part of the mandate in our negotiation language. There are administrators, there are three principals, and there are Unit B, as well as teachers, that are on that team. And we have come together every Monday since we passed negotiations to plan the best kind of training, the best kind of equity and services. Since that time, and I'll just, since I was there, I'll just talk off the top of my head, we have created two videos. It's very important when you're trying to create consistency across the district that the same word is given to all. So videos that were presented by a combination of folks, just talking about the language, what was going to happen, the timelines were presented in both the April, I'm sorry, May, yeah, April and May release days, because that just came in for the April. And so since those release days, which gave a general overview, which took care of the first couple of modules of the mandated training, we had a baseline. What are your hopes and your fears? We've taken, we've taken great surveys, and we've used the data to turn around the training sessions. Tomorrow, in seven Lowell schools, we are training over 750 people who'll be evaluated. We have made a train-the-trainer model. The presenters are teachers, administrators, and principals, and they've made cohort teams and feeder-school patents. So Lowell High School, we have 120 teachers that signed up, I'm sorry, people who will be evaluated, Unit A and B, that have signed up for this initial training. So we designed that, we looked at the Department of Education modules, and we built a train-the-trainer model across the district. We then brought in two training sessions on Monday afternoons for our people to, to come in and get the training that was presented by principals and the people who are in charge. And so tomorrow and Friday, there will be eight hours of training, four hours each day. Tomorrow, we'll be unpacking the standards and what those standards mean, what is effective instruction. And the second day, we'll be looking at goal setting and self-evaluation and self-assessment. So the Department of Education tells us that there is some integral beginning training. This will lead the way for us to then go into the fall with the right training under everybody's belts. At the same time, Mr. Pennard is going to be filming at the high school, so this will become available online for people who can't go to the training. And we are also going to conduct these same sessions in August before school begins. When we get back to school, we already know the first two release days will be data summits, looking at the data, knowing the data, knowing your students, to be able to then, in October, getting to goal setting. So we have been arduously trying to do what's right for all. Our team believes that the knowledge in the system is the best knowledge on this, in this area, and so that's where we are as we stand. All of us here will be attending different sessions across town tomorrow, just to make sure the equity's there. Department of Education, the actually Associate Commissioner of Educator Evaluation will be at Lowell High School with Ms. LeBron tomorrow to just look at our training and to make sure it's up to standard, and that we're very confident. So I just wanted to keep you all posted that they're, they're very serious. We have been, Unit A, Unit B, and Unit C, that would be me, all together at the table, planning this to make it reflective practice. So that's where we are. Just wanted to keep you aware of what's going on.
Thank you. Any discussion on this report? Entertained a motion to accept and place on file, so moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have the Merklin School redesign grant for Year Three renewal. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. This is the third, and as far as we know, last opportunity for additional funding that we know of for the Merklin School. The full amount that was requested of $521,500 was awarded by the department. The application went in. As always, they made some, some suggestions, but we are moving forward with next year's plan, and we do have the funding this particular year. Mr. Chikala and I, as well as UTL representation, have been talking about sustainability because it's, it's how we do business, and it's not always the funding, but of course, the funding does have a great deal by providing the extra planning time in the grant. But we did get the grant, and I just wanted to make you all aware of that.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to accept as a report of progress. There is money involved, so we take a roll call. I need a motion, though. Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott. Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott? Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, we have a report on inventory. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have a answer to a motion by Ms. Kim Scott, Ms. Kristin Ross Sikewich, where they asked for us to provide an inventory of all technology prior to the budget session at each school, according to the age expected, life of each piece of equipment, inventory of science equipment and kits at each school, and age to report recommendations apply for each school. Provide an inventory prior to the budget with all musical instruments at each school and the age and the cost of replacement. Ms. Abrams was overseeing this particular inventory and has provided a good deal of information overall. You will see by grade levels what we have, elementary, middle, and high school, and as far as the musical instruments. And then there is a printout by school of technology. I'm going to ask Ms. Abrams, who put the report together, to speak about any details she might want to share, and then we'll open it up for questions you may have.
Specifically, too, I wanted to talk to the science materials because I know that there was something that was of interest to all. When Mrs. Cohen came on board a year ago, one of the first things she did do was meet with principals and ask them what types of kits that were still in the buildings. There were some kits, there are some kits in buildings, however, all the pieces and all the materials in them are not updated. So she took a survey of all that, and really, what we've decided is, we took a trip to Lawrence just a couple of weeks ago. They have a center in Lawrence, which is a science center, which is basically all made up of kits that follow the curriculum. So having looked at that, Mrs. Cohen and myself would like to move forward. And as we implement more science into the elementary level, which is our goal for next year, looking at certain standards by grade level, start to develop some of these kits so that we could have these kits. What happens is, they'd be stored centrally and then sent out to the schools and refurbished every year and put back. So that's kind of where we are with the elementary science, and I know that that was a concern, so I just wanted to speak to that. I think Dr. Clark made a very good report of all the musical instruments, equity around the district. It's different in different places. Newer schools have newer materials. But she did give a, you know, a solid report in that, too. So, yeah, entertaining questions.
Thank you. Any discussion on the Glockens fields? Ms. Scott?
Yes, I'd like to discuss. Mr. Mayor, I did have a few questions from the report through to the Superintendent. As far as the conversation that we had on the musical instruments, what we discussed during the Subcommittee was them coming forward with a recommendation of what a classroom would look like, that they were able to, you know, meet the state standards in music, what that would look like, like basically a uniform classroom across the district. And that was the discussion on the science equipment, too. So I did not see that in this report.
Right. I think what they, if I could, I'm sorry. I think what they did is really just do the inventory. And I think over the summer, I know we're planning for the science, to see what that will look like in every school. And I can certainly check in with Dr. Clark in terms of the music equipment to see what that should be like, too. You know, there's a wealth of different materials around the district, but we just got to streamline where they are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this report? Ms. Martin?
Can I just ask what the P A R C C type, what does that stand for?
Where am I looking? I'm sorry.
On the, on the technology inventory, it lists P A R, it's like an A B. I'm assuming it's the level.
Okay. I'm going to change, give that to Mr. Lang, because he did that, and thank you.
I should have known.
I had nothing to do with this. That's the, the rating with the new PRC assessment that's coming out. I don't know it off the top of my head, but there's certain categories that the computers or the iPad-type technology would fall into, and it's rated according to the PRC assessment. We used to have to provide reports to the DOE based on like Level A, B, C.
Right.
Now they line everything up for the upcoming assessment. So it's what, and I can, the next time we give you the report, we can add a little index that talks about what the, the means of it is. I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's just how they actually categorize it to see if you're in line for the, the assessment, which is a year out, and it's got to be taken on technology.
Okay. Because I was reading it like it was the traditional A, B, C that we had used before, that just talked about really age.
No, it takes into consideration, I know there's some, I'm doing it off the top of my head, but there's like some speed issues.
Okay, so the capacity of each one is being
It's capacity. But I'll give you a legend in the next report that we do that walks you through it.
Everyone loves a legend. Thank you.
Ms. Scott?
One more question while Mr. Lang is up at bat here. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lang. The technology report, am I missing this, or did this not have the iPads and the smart boards and projectors and everything on it? All I can see is the workstation computers.
So far, the, the technology folks were able to, in the database, is about 4,000 pieces of the new technology. I know it's all the workstations, all the laptops. I do believe the iPads are in there as well. I could pull up and look at, look at a couple of schools for you. I know by the end of the summer, we'll produce this inventory for you again. They're going to have all of the, as we talked about, all the rest of, say, the smart boards, the Mobbies, any of the missing iPad cards, if they weren't included in this first go-around, they'll be in there. So I can reproduce this for you at the end of the summer. But I know it's about 4,000 pieces that they got in so far, and as they're doing their inventory over the summer to check things, we'll get the rest in for you.
Okay. So they're, they're tagging them right now still? Is that what they're doing, or are they already in the system now?
No, the newer technology that we would have purchased at the time would already be asset-tagged. But what they do at this point in the year is go around and make sure everything is where it's supposed to be in the buildings. So they would grab anything that might be omitted from this list. The other issue, like the, since the smart boards, when they came in, they don't necessarily have an asset tag on them or an ID, like an Apple ID, like the Apple equipment does. So they're going to actually individually tag each of them and tie them into the database.
Any further discussion? Entertained a motion to accept the report as a report of progress, so moved by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have a report on the progress of the partnership between Lowell High School and Youth Build. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, last probably October-ish, I had a meeting with the director of, the Executive Director of Community Teamwork, Karen Frederick, and her team from Youth Build, as well as David Robinson from Student Support Services. And we discussed the opportunity to partner. And I told you about it, and it was approved by this committee, to have a pilot program between Youth Build on Dutton Street and Lowell High School. The housemasters at Lowell High School strategically chose six students. We wanted to have students who portfolio were on the track to graduate, but we were concerned that they were going to finish. Six students from Lowell High School were in fact given a half-day option, half-day at the high school, because they were close enough to credits for graduation that they could be freed up, and then to have some credits at the high, at Youth Build from doing the construction in the learning modules that they have there. I'm very pleased to announce to you all that all six students graduated from Lowell High School. They have summer initiatives. The work continues from the Youth Build program, but it was a very successful project. Ms. Fredericks and I spoke about continuing the partnership. We did not, at this particular time, we're going to have a site visit with Mr. Lang and others because there are some financial pieces. We're trying to think of in-kind parts of our partnership to formalize it. I do not have a proposal at this particular point. I just wanted to get you ready for it during the summer because when we continually look at, I know our budget's settled, but if we're going to move anything around, we might in fact have to relook at how we could fund a program like this as another instructional option for children who might have challenges. But it was, they gave me, and I did not include it for you, a write-up on each child, and for confidentiality purposes, I was unable to do so, but the stories of what were hap, what was happening in these children's lives. We know that this special interaction, and actually, the will of this committee to trust the pilot was the reason why these six kids finished. And so I just wanted to bring that good news story and to let you know that I will keep you posted if we move closer to how we can continue this program or expand it. But there has to be, we have to iron out an MOU. but there has to be, we have to iron out an MOU. We kind of just looked at it as a pilot last year, so, but it was very successful, and I wanted to report that.
Thank you. Any discussion on this report? Entertained a motion to accept the report as a report of progress, so moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have the 2013-2014 Lowell High School student handbook revision. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recall that, and I think, I believe our last meeting, there were revisions that came about to the handbook, and, but I believe that some other language came up since then and before the printing. I would, wanted to go before the committee. I'm going to turn this over to the expert, and that's Assistant Superintendent Murphy. She knows why the changes are and where they are, and so I'm going to ask Ms. Murphy to help us out.
Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. The, if you look at the second page of the report, it shows in red the language that was approved at the last meeting, specifically around the academic policies and the weighted GPA. The language that had been proposed, and you did vote on it at the last meeting, indicates that, the report card transcript will also indicate the student's position in the class in one of the following categories, and it then proceeds to list top 2%, top 5%, 10%, and so on. After that meeting, it was brought to my attention that last August 2012, this committee in either the curriculum or Lowell High School Subcommittee discussed the language different from that, and specifically, the language that you had approved at that time called for, the report card and transcript indicate the GPA profile of the senior class and the range of highest and lowest, so that it wouldn't specifically rank students by percentiles, it wouldn't rank students by the class rank, the numerical number, but that all students would have a GPA, and in addition to that, we would provide the highest and lowest GPA to the schools. And that was specifically the language that was voted on last August. It was brought to my attention following the last meeting. We did a lot of research, pulled up minutes from the school committee meetings, and this is the language that you had previously approved last August. So, I'm asking for your approval to revise what you approved at the last school committee meeting.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Madam Superintendent. Is that, is that the end of the report?
Yes.
Entertained then, a motion to accept the report as a report of progress, so moved by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have under new business, greater Lawrence Educational Collaborative Board of Directors' Appointment. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you. In compliance with Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, every member district of a collaborative must annually report either a member of the school committee, which I think would be wonderful, or its superintendent of schools to be the appointed representative to the board of directors of the collaborative. I would like to inform this committee, there are many school committee members, as a matter of fact, many more this morning, but I would proud to serve if that is your will or if anybody would like to step up. I have to be approved, and it has to go forward, but the GLAC committee has to be approved annually, so for your review and your.
Thank you. Who, who would like to go to Lawrence? Oh, I see a lot of hands. Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the superintendent has done a remarkable job serving on the Greater Lawrence Educational Collaborative Board of Directors, so it is my pleasure to make a motion to appoint Superintendent Jean Franco to the Board of Directors.
Motion by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
How do I say her name? Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, we have under new business, a vote to accept gifts from Kronos Incorporated, a $5,000 grant, and UTC Aerospace Systems, a $3,000 grant. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been approached by these two entities to add more support to our IDEA camp and to building our STEM pathway, so for your, I would ask for you to accept the grant fund of $5,000 and $3,000 for, to go into the IDEA camp revolving fund.
Motion to accept by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikewich. Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have the establishment of lunch price for 2013-2014 school year. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In a report from Deputy Superintendent Lang, it, we have got to look at our school lunch pricing over time, and it appears that we can go up to the amount of $2,046. The recommendation at this particular time will be for us to go up in prices 10 cents, so from $185 this year for a paid lunch, full paid lunch, to $195 for the 2013-14 school year.
Motion to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have fiscal year 2013 budget transfer. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for a budget transfer within the FY13 budget to meet the fixed costs and expenses within the regular and special education transportation programs in the amount of $2,000, $275,000. This, the Lang is requesting $175,000 to be transferred to regular education transportation and $100,000 to special education transportation, from, which would be coming from the school committee suspense account. This has been discussed at the finance subcommittee meeting, and the costs were because of mandated transportation for homeless children, which had incurred these extra costs. I welcome any questions you may have.
Any discussion? Entertained a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have convention and conference requests that entertain, and there's only one, so it's a request. Entertained a motion.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
I entertain a question, then. Mr. Conway.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the superintendent. I, I mean, I'm in, all in favor of, of additional education for our staff, but would there be a program that would be similar to the one in Columbia University in New York? Would it, would there, wouldn't there be something in Boston? I mean, we have some of the best universities and colleges in the country. And I'm just curious on, if there would have been something that we would, that would be equivalent to what, what they would have in New York. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. It's a valid, valid question, and, and I know that we do have so many resources in this region, so I would know, I would, I can know why you would imagine. This Columbia University piece is with the, the person who is the top of the whole field. The whole writing program is based on Lucy Carkins. Lucy Carkins is the person who gives, has this teachers college, and she has coursework, and it has been so valuable. I mean, the Merklin has gone through their redesign, and I think across the district. What they're saying is, if you're a Level III school, or if you're, you want this training, they really think that the experience of being at that particular place, that's what we've been told, and it has been something that we have seen results in different areas. So, I know that it, it sounds like that it could be done in another way, but this is the person who started and has written all the books and her team, and I, I believe that our teachers and administrators have found, founded some of the finest professional development they've ever had. So, we did use the funding from grants to be able to allow that experience for our teachers, so that's the reason why.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Entertained a motion at this point. Motion to approve by Ms. Ross Sikewich, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, we have communications. A thank-you letter to Jim Campanini, son editor for the first Kendall M. Wallace Regional Knowledge Bowl competition, which will no doubt ensure that the next generation is as well-informed as current newspaper subscribers. Entertained a motion to accept, placed on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Leary.
Mayor, can I take a point of personal privilege?
Point of personal privilege by Mr. Leary.
First, I, I thank you for, I'll be brief, but I think it's important to do tonight. I'm not going to be making the next meeting in July, so I definitely wanted to recognize, and I know folks will do it at the next meeting, and thank Assistant Superintendent Ann Murphy for her service for the school department. I think her service has been more than exceptional, working with her since I've been on the committee and mostly with her being as the Assistant Superintendent, working through really the most challenging budget times in, basically since the Great Depression, using your knowledge, using your, your basically lack of drama when things got really dramatic often, was a, was a personal, I think, able me to get through it without causing damage, I guess is probably the least professional way of saying it. But I think you were a professional, you were knowledgeable. We didn't always agree, but yet you provided all the information needed to make sound